I have to speak.
Really, because I have to get his equipment.
And so it's better for us to talk.
Well, some of them.
I've gone to speech.
In non-dia.
They don't know what you call it. Too many headed.
There you go.
Good for skiing those black.
Again, I've gotten more hurt in Michigan than anything.
My mountain, my islands, where do you?
Uh, pretty bittersweet. I've done a lot of bittersweet, just because it's close. Crystal's probably my favorite as far as like time value goes. Been skiing. When is this?
What's more?
I have to commit.
It is six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Um. First on our agenda, the new business. Um, and I don't know if I need to turn this over to you, Chris. Is this your section? Okay, I'm just gonna pass the time. Go ahead.
So called a board finance meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is to approve and vote on a slate of officers. Nomination.
I move to elect the slate of respectable as president of board of finance and Mark Parker is second.
Who do I have second?
Spencer will second then.
The move is second, any discussion?
Can you move yourself, Spencer? I mean, obviously you just did, but.
What?
No concerns, sorry.
No concerns? No concerns? Okay, Eric None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? All of them, alright, so in the board packet, you saw the investment policy that is the same investment policy that we've had for quite a while. There were no changes, Mike, to that. Um, if you had a chance to read through it and look back over it again. Questions on that, but we do need a motion to approve the investment policy.
What package are we in?
Oh, the back, the very back, sorry. The back forty-three.
I pay.
Yeah, it's forty-three, I think is what it says.
Yeah, he's right at the last, I think.
Forty-three, forty, and for a second. That's what, yeah.
Basically, it says we have to not invest in bonds I skimped so up so.
Yeah, and everything in there is in, um, from the Indiana code that you see in there.
Yeah, I think the only change that I've seen since you and I've been on the board is that this we used to only be able to invest in bonds.
Correct.
We changed that. But that's the only change there for a public.
Okay, I move we accept or approve the investment policy.
Then motion, we have second.
Carmen was second.
Carmen second. Um, any other discussion? Concerns? Those in favor of our body public library investment policy, aye? They oppose? Um, the next thing on the agenda that we have is to go over our special funds, and that is on the financial report, and I believe I don't know what ages those are in the it's right before twenty-four? Um, I don't know the page number, it says page one of one.
No, it says twenty-four to the right.
Okay, you're in the other, perfect. Yes, page starts on page twenty-four, the financial report. Um. Does have the year end balances on those. If you'll look, the special funds that we do have are line item two twenty-seven Simon JP Body Fund, two twenty-eight, the Julius Snodgrass Fund. And I believe the other one is two thirty-five, the Woodland County Community Foundation Fund as well. Where is that? Am I missing that?
And Julius Snodgrass Fund, did we make any current on that this year?
Um, we had a dispart, we bond.
Yeah, no, we spent some money out of it.
Yes.
But there was no like interest or anything or anything of the such.
And the others, the same interest, so now that's the
I saw a story in Sam account.
And this is not, I know this is not the right question, it's not gonna stop.
What we're supposed to ask.
I know that the December meeting, we had received thirteen thousand dollars from up state trust gets. Where would those show on something? Two hundred, yep, I'm sure. Those went into, okay, that's the unrestricted, and so that would be part of that twenty-two seven. The receipts here today for last year, okay.
And that is unrestricted, yes, that could be used for anything. The Simon JP Body does have restrictions upon it and how much of it we can spend. And Julius Snodgrass Fund, they are fine on the fruit. Whatever library issues. And the Woodland County Community Foundation Fund, I don't remember if that's just, you know, all that, and if there's any in that as well. Those I don't remember.
That's just a general fund that anybody can contribute to.
It's. So, any questions that you see on the page for the general special revenue debt service for the fiduciary number seven? Any questions on any of those, you can see year-to-date balances and at the bottom, the total of all bank balances?
Is that amount of gift received pretty typical? It's high.
You had a couple of higher ones. Not for that much, just yet.
Take what we can get.
And the next page, the thread report, which I think on there. Uh, you can see the Star Financial Bank, Lake City, and then the Petty Cash total there.
Page.
Uh, should be, oh, mine is the next page, I'm sorry, I don't.
Mine goes either comfort.
Yeah, that's.
Mine goes.
Well, it's the same, it's in essence the same page, it just is the totals are the same. Um, this just has the amount of receipts that came in for just this last month, not for the whole year. And then the total for all bank accounts, which is what we have here on the total, but it's just broken down into the three different segments of Star Bank, Lake City Bank, and then Petty Cash.
That's the registered one?
No, 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 this is the bank balance.
We don't have a game.
Yeah, that was just my last financial report. Guys, not that one here.
It's so good.
Yeah, this is.
Taking it with anyone else.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, so just letting you know, it's the same numbers that we see on the bottom, on the right. That number, that total, is the same total on the bank balances total. The only difference is this is broken down into which bank and which phase it's in.
Why we keep Lake City Bank.
Um, I think we had to have that one when we did our bond.
And at one point, the state board of accounts. Have handled in the right account.
Yes.
Account values.
Is that worth rebalancing between the two for that purpose? Or any kind of state?
Hi, have you been rebalancing these funds? I would say personally, no, for that reason, but this was just brought into the, uh, or bond. Because it needed to be in the.
Got it.
And if there's any other things, nice to have a town party with the bank instead.
Well, thank you for being charged all of that.
Chris, do we need a motion to approve that?
Well, that, the, no, the report, no.
The depositories and checks items.
The next one.
There is a resolution.
So the next thing you should see is the page forty. Page forty, you will see the two thousand twenty, or twenty twenty-five resolution to approve bank accounts and check signer. And that would allow Greg moves to approve the depositories and the check office issues.
Carmen seconds.
Move it seconded. Any other questions, comments, serves, all those in favor? Aye. Both? Motion carries?
We have to sign.
And we do have to sign this.
Yes, man.
The column brought by and. Uh, two more pieces. One, outstanding checks this year, no outstanding check.
That is.
So, well, that's two years, there's two years, there's a two-year increment piece for those for outstanding check and keep them for two years. Um, having said that, next year looks to be a banner year, outstanding checks. So. And then the last is, um, we need a motion to approve designate libraries notification newspaper at, uh, posted mail.
So we'll move to the notification newspaper posted mail.
Cancel that second, that motion.
And moved in second. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yes, man.
Like, they don't produce an actual paper anymore.
And they do, there is still a paper.
Okay, great.
Why doesn't it be?
Obviously, I don't get that one.
It does.
Well, I do, but it doesn't get read all the time.
Okay, it does beg the question, what happens if there isn't a?
It has one.
Does it, because of what we just did? Because I figured the law still says it has to be printed.
It does. It does, so. And if everybody's okay with our little, when did they?
Yeah.
Our set. And any others?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? Um, with that, if there are no other comments, questions, concerns, or I wonders that you were looking through?
I know that reference.
I would move to adjourn the board of financing.
That's right. The move by Greg, we have a second.
Start.
So there it is. All there. Aye.
Running it with speed.
Sign that.
That was crazy.
And come back saying.
Three, we'll get back there. That's in the next.
Right, again. Oh, we're not getting out of there that.
I was ready.
That's just the first little.
Moving back to our regular meeting, we're just gonna jump right in and look at last month's minutes, as everyone had a chance to review. And someone make a motion to approve.
Greg will move to approve the minutes as presented.
Great moves. But your second?
Spencer will second.
Spencer's second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Beautiful minutes pass, moving right along to our new business, which is the resolution twenty twenty-four incumbences. Just at one minute.
Yep.
So this allows us to continue to pay things that are already ordered but have not cleared, uh, from last year's twenty-four budget. So it doesn't affect, uh, our twenty-four budget, because these are things that are ordered, like books and stuff that are reordered, but they haven't come in, so the company had to fill us yet. So, uh, that's what the, any questions about what this is and what it does?
That's standard operating procedure, correct, Mike?
Yeah. I even thought you had a little other attachment to it. I realized, all those in conference.
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Oh, you got it right there, okay. Yes, yes, right there it is. Um, I will move to adopt the resolution to number twenty-four operating fund. Okay. It's for that, it's for that amount, twenty-five thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and seven cents. So, Greg will move.
So. Second by Chris.
Chris seconds. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next, we have resolutions, transfer funds to rainy day.
Yes, so, uh, we again were good stewards of our budget, our funds, and as such, we have a slight surplus. Uh, the state allows us to move some of those funds up to ten percent of our operating budget into rainy day for future uses, I'm proposing every, uh, four to, uh, hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred eighty dollars from our operating fund to rainy day. Also with that, uh, the resolution proposed that we move, uh, seven thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents from our, uh, bond redemption fund. We paid off our bond, uh, there was money left over in that fund. We can't use that money for anything else unless we move it, so, uh, probably move that into our rainy day. Uh, that would mean that we would move, uh, two hundred and one thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents for those two funds in our rainy day.
Still under the threshold of the combined.
Yes.
What is the?
Ten percent.
Total hot reading. So can I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
I would like to propose a motion that we remove one hundred ninety-four dollars, two hundred eighty dollars from the budget for the rainy day fund, I have my underlying.
Oh, wow, look, that's much more.
And seven dollars, seven dollars, and ninety-eight cents from the bond redemption fund to rainy day fund, a total of seven ninety-eight.
Beautiful, what an excellent summary.
Mark's second.
Mark's second. This is just a rolling meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, you can say nay. Fabulous, it passes.
Quick, quick question on that, but I didn't manage to sneak in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it ten percent of the certified budget that we're allowed to transfer? Or, because I think we're over when we add in the.
So, ten percent of the operating, so what we can do of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four operating budget. The other one doesn't count for that ten percent because it's from a different.
Got it.
The bond redemption.
Okay.
Which is no longer included and. Right.
True, too.
Has failed from there.
Yeah, couldn't use it because.
Yeah, sure, that makes total sense.
Listen.
I didn't, I didn't grab.
Yes, yes, two together. Two together are different.
Yeah, we were still under that.
I have a question also, do we try and maintain the rainy day fund at a certain level in the past, or just whenever we have extra money, we throw it in there?
The original, Greg and I, we were originally having the process of when we remodeled the downstairs here. And then we're looking at the other rooms over here that were unused to still do those. And then the roof, the roof was always a big, big question mark, oh my gosh, that was horrendously. And the last.
We capped that rainy day.
Yeah, the last, the last quote we got, I think, was for seven hundred thirty thousand dollars to replace the roof. And that we've been trying to do.
So we covered it with, we covered it with vinyl or plastic or some sort of a sealant and.
Immediately. It's so far. Um, so I don't, we can get those if you'd like to see them, but.
Yeah, no, I would just.
Apparently, yes.
But I think it's a valid question for the board planning purposes of what level of budget do we like to see, I don't know what standard.
So there is a on the box, there's a law that says that we can't have more than hundred fifty percent of our operating budget. Uh, our certified budget can't be in rainy day, so we can't just pour money, we have to have a proper purpose. So if they find some of our, uh, the cap, in our case, the county council, uh, were to find out that we had one hundred sixty percent of our funds in rainy day, they could ask us why and what's for it, as long, even then, as long as we have a plan for it, they, we're saving up because we have to repair a roof or something back, that's fine. But they just, like, the money is taxpayer money, and you have to be using it for taxpayer purposes, not just to pour onto it forever and ever. So, there's no limit of how much we can save, as long as we have a purpose for it.
Okay.
Uh, but at one fifty, the county council could come in and say, I guess.
In my exact practical matter, would it be more likely that that would be bought by the state board of the council during?
Probably.
Only because I guess I can envision a universe for the county council.
Exactly.
Luring over our budget to, you know.
Oh, I mean, yes, I keep an eye on, but.
Not anywhere close, I'm presenting.
No, we're not.
And since we can only transfer ten percent of our budget theoretically, we have another ten years before that becomes a problem.
But that was, uh.
We spent nothing.
Uh, if you, a couple of things we were talking about was like a business-type incubator space or something like that, the community could use in that area. All kinds of different things that we had discussed to put and use, and use those funds. Um, and then HVAC was becoming a problem. Certain things were starting to, so we want it, we'll get in the budget, we'll cut, so that's where that one is.
Thank you.
As a friendly reminder, we did approve that, so the next thing that we have on our agenda is the collection development policy request to reconsider. Um, that is listed in our packets. And correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct, page seven.
Yes.
Way fast. It's, oh, it's, oh, you didn't even read it even.
So last month, it was proposed that we add some clarifying language to it to make sure that people were aware that if they didn't, if they had a question, if they said they didn't like the result, they always have the opportunity to appeal to the board. So I added the language that was, uh, intended.
Has everybody had a chance to read over this? Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just to move the discussion forward, I will go ahead because this is my word. Um, I will go again to adopt that new language. Be consideration policy because it clarifies that if the patron wasn't satisfied that board offers. Not sure that was, uh, we all understood it that way, but I don't think it read that. So I will go ahead, and I know that there could be some more discussion, because we talked about having more and more involved at different levels, things like that, but I'll go ahead and at least move, uh, adopt that. Both will.
Perfect. Anybody like a second?
Is that funny?
Well, it's second.
You can, yeah, but that's.
Oh, okay.
We'll discuss it before we vote.
Oh, okay.
We don't always do it this way, but you're supposed to have a motion to second and then discuss.
Oh, okay.
Technically, technically. If we hold a. We don't always do it that way, we usually discuss, 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 and then move, but I will go ahead since I did suggest this, so I.
Yes, I second your motion. Perfect, and your seconds. Discussion.
Um. From part of what we just forwarded to the president, is that would that be a, I know there's a period, is that a stopping point? Like, can the president take action, or does it just go to the president first? And then to the board of trustees? This is a question, clarifying question. Yeah.
I, you and I have both been present before, I've never made, that, to me, it was the president was sort of a ministerial duty to then present it.
Correctly, the next sentence, the library board of trustees takes the final action, so.
Okay, I think you're.
You're okay, you like that?
I think it's okay.
Okay.
I wouldn't want somebody coming and trying to petition you specifically.
Well, I would.
And then you just go, no.
I would just, I would just distribute it anyway and say, this is the world horn, I'm just a messenger. So, but, um, yeah, thank you. Good to clarify.
Sorry, I'm lying, or?
Uh, not until we approve it.
The current language, it, it basically said if the committee does not reach a resolution or solution, uh, the request will be forwarded to the library, but I think it was the whole, I think we added in that does not resolve into the patent satisfaction, I think that was what that's stacking.
Yeah, it wasn't to the page of satisfaction, that part was.
So the stuff there, this is on the line except for the red stuff.
Oh.
The red stuff is what we would be adding.
Because I think we were all interpreting it to have the red stuff in there, but then when we read it more closely at the last board meeting, it was like, oh, wait, that doesn't actually say what.
We all.
Interpreting it to me.
Here what we, and it's, it's like talking to my mom when she is still alive, she said, don't listen to what I said, you knew what I meant.
Yes. Yeah.
Which, by the way, I'm starting to say more and more. You know what I meant.
Yeah, you might for writing that up.
That was actually correct, like.
All right, are we ready to vote?
I believe so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Language passes. Now we can move on to the director's report. Right? Okay.
Yes, I feel like I did not, well, this is. It's too late, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I circled it, I was like, come on, my, you know, you got spelled out. That's not.
Yeah, well, you didn't even circle it, so, I'm not bringing that up.
You're not gonna be that guy.
Bringing that up.
Uh. When we made the change to only open the lower level library for parties on Sunday, we're going to be offer folks to the public, uh, it was a question I return to the court, uh, so I'm doing that, they are going well, we are having, uh, the, the players down here, they have not had any issue. I need to think about upstairs not being opened. Um, there were some logistical things that always first start something new that we had to figure out, or how you prevent people from going upstairs, we're telling staff members, we'll figure that out, we'll go on school, we need to know clients. That's why not being open, so they have to watch our attention. It's not really well. Uh, we had handful of staff signed up, we just did for the last quarter, uh, rotation, and now getting people on rotation. All songs, I, hopefully, yeah, I'll map it out. Uh, so I'm asking to be the volunteer, we've only had a couple at this point. Uh, if I don't have more, I don't want to throw the burden on a couple, I would go into the project rotation, so, uh, the idea was to, those that really wanted it, and yes, I should have up that one area, I mean, I had one. I think we will still get that one. Ultimately, we will figure out what it is. Let's thank the board for that.
It does, do the rooms continue to be full?
Yeah, there, there, there are.
Well, and that was my concern, that was, yeah.
Yeah, there are, there's still bookings, uh, there happen some Sundays where there's no one, nothing booking, so no one had to work for, for that, so. But, yeah, we still have.
Does the one staff member feel? They, yeah.
Yep, I have not had any complaints or concerns. Uh, some of them, uh, will bring like their spouse with them and.
Because they're really just working, yeah.
Yeah, and they have a procedure or something. Somebody had this.
Yep, I've had no one.
Excellent, thanks for getting back, Chris.
Uh, we did have another staff change. Uh, Hannah was our adult services professional assistant, uh, she moved back to closer to family. Uh, same time that was happening, we found out that Sarah, that Greg left her, the first, uh, that she wasn't happy with her new job and actually left that, so. Do, if she was, people found out that she would love to come back, but the device worked out perfectly, so we brought her back on, uh, yes, uh, Monday, which is after our adult services, public, public, professional assistant duties, but already has the circulation down, on the library lot of basic reference, questions. Sounds awesome, yeah. These are hard to get around. We're all excited about that.
Yes, thanks, Will, can you supervise your, that's somebody attest to the water on the other side and then came back?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, she, she left her full-time position and left her full-time position back.
Just try asking, you can say in the back.
Uh, she, she, it is actually, uh, a different pay, job application, so it isn't the same. So they did not make it in this this packet, uh, because I frankly forgot about it, because we never think about this, but, flat. For those that don't know what a pack is, the public library access card, it's for the state library, you can pay money every year, and you are able to go to any public library states and have access to materials. Uh, there, it, the speed is set by the state, it's been sixty-five dollars for ever. I think they raised for the first time, started to first, now, seven, uh, five dollars. Uh, so that went into effect, uh, but since the state mandated that price. Finish this, the last, last board doesn't want to talk.
And that's like, and that's kind of, I don't want to say like super evergreen, but evergreen is, we have as part of our, our, our tax. But if we wanted to go technically, we didn't have reciprocal agreement, Terrence go. The plan card would work there, or work in Allen County, that's better.
Yes.
Yeah. And, which is also kind of.
That's only seventy bucks.
Yes, that's, that's not bad, but boy, she got all of evergreen free. So, but I guess if you wanted to specifically go to Allen, yeah, or Mary.
Seventy dollars per person or for library?
For our, for our.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. We have a lot, not a lot, but in years past, non-serviced residents with pockets.
Yeah, so that's the only thing there. We've had great program. During the, it's a reading program, six weeks long, which is started. Off time titties and pipes again. Forging people to. Sitting inside, stay warm and read a book, like that.
Tell what I wanted to ask in question system.
Is she ready to pencil? Hey.
I had my mouth, okay. It just started with me finding on the building Fort Wayne Dance Hall. I then traced through things, I was like, oh, there's a program in the auditorium on a Saturday with the Fort Wayne Dance Collective, which I, the message was, previously, I think it would have been Katie. Kelsey, somebody had gotten a grant and had burnt commission for another project. All I'm going to suggest is if they can do some more outreach with some other groups, specifically the City Arts Commission or Columbia City Connect. They get, they'll get more of that information out, they looked at that, they look like there were still ninety-two spots open. And that may, that may be well what they were looking for, they still couldn't have more than ten. And, and my theory is if they siloed off and it basically are just doing the, the live, just the library's social media, especially it's the playover, whether they're sports or science or the arts. There's this whole other network of things that they should make an effort to plug into.
So, actually, we are trying new things with our marketing.
Okay.
One of those things is reaching out directly with things like the Dance Collective to.
I thought that was a great thing, I don't think, but I'm just, my, my, my concern was I just, I just learned about it, sent it off to several members of the Arts Commission, and they're like, oh, we'll put this on our page. And, and all of a sudden, it was, we're gonna try to help pull up with that.
So we, we send it to the newspapers.
Okay.
And stuff, and Fort Wayne's. Business.
Yes. And I saw that, but I saw that in the.
This is a new thing, but that's a good note for me to, if we were trying to think of places to.
Columbia City Connect is a really good one.
It is, and they have a subscribable calendar, which.
Their, their calendar is kind of turning into the central portal, and that's what the Arts Commission is going to use as its.
It gets literally on my, my Google Calendar, you can just put it right on there.
Wow.
And it's very, very.
So if there was one takeaway of these Columbia's.
Yeah. But yeah, we were trying to make some of those be proactive and, especially in fact, things to get to out broader, but if we're not hitting up.
Well, it's just as broad as you can be and as any place should go, so that's, that was the.
And I'm not sure where all these, that, obviously, we missed that.
Plus, I did know how many other board members knew about that, I think you had a mention of it in one of the reports, but it's kind of on campus, you know. Looks, looks like a really interesting thing, and it's, it's the, the, the children's department that's doing it, or?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay, shut up again, so my mouth goes, so.
Okay.
Okay. Good information. Yeah, there's another big piece is the, here's new year and for our technology. Rotations, and so this year is staff appears to suffer up. So we are going to be starting to purchase those, and we're going to break it up into quarters, so we're not buying everything at once, then changing everything at once, so. Set in super larger, all our signings for everyone's board. The other thing that we've been talking, Katie and I have been talking a lot about is our hoopla and. Libby and those type of deep book, how we manage that. She's talked a lot. Number, you just played it. We are not the only library out there that is. Aghast at the bus, uh, but. I mean, it's not all, it was false, it's publishers, and so, but yeah, they're, we're looking for ways to.
Well, and as a, as a user of those things, I'm in line for a very long time. Yeah, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, because multiple times I've come physically into the library to get that for book. But I, I do think that. That's an experience that we want to make sure that we're writing the best that we can.
So let's, let's kind of trade off with hoopla, because hoopla is instant access, and we only pay for the ones that we use. But at the same time, they don't have all the titles and that's even necessarily most decent title. But while Libby has those, so if, there's a reason to have both, and there's benefits to have both, but at the same time, have both costs us. Just something that we are continuing to have conversations about and talk about.
But they are still being used.
They are still being used.
Yeah.
And Katie was actually out to go to this report, she advanced the statistics preparing. Users in both vendors and some of that, so we're looking at all of.
Didn't have an alternative, though, for those. And another thing, I don't think they need more approval, but that sounds reasonable, that would price it out differently. Hopefully would be a total cost of more, but would allow more than one checkout at a time.
Just cost first, yeah, giving it a cost first, for sure.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So it breaks it. Pricing down, but again, that's not on every title, have that option.
So, that's, because I was gonna say. We've been knowing that, yeah.
I mean, five dollars forty-five cents, I don't know if that's a good indicator, but that adds up pretty quickly if it's five, five forty-five for a book. Especially because I often have to rent them multiple times to access them for the old slide. So depending on how that's built out, I could conceivably cost the library twenty bucks because if it.
She also said, library can also set a limit if so desired, so.
Exactly.
Sorry, Spencer, you may have to read it during your home.
Libby would notify me properly that it's.
Okay.
Excuse me. It was funny and I had to go.
I got the alert that it was returned, I was like, wait a minute.
Are there any questions running in the other reports? Park reports?
I, I thought, just a bit of feedback, I thought Kelsey's idea, we didn't partake in it, but the writing to the hometown people, I thought that was really, really good idea.
I did see it, enjoyed it. Was that in lieu of the letters to Santa or in addition to?
In addition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jeez. That's a good steal.
Sounds like the books are bad.
I was there, it was off the hook, it was insane, the line was all the way down that.
This, was this the one with high school students that had done it?
So tell us more about it.
I, I, we received a couple months ago, I think, and you were there, you saw that. At the high school at Eagle Tech, they had like these projects, they have a community service type project. And these two, two kids, Mason and Natalie, wanted to get more books into the hands of kids, that was the simple goal. And they had a billion ideas. And so I think the primary challenge that most of us had for them, we were there as reviewers of their project, but they implemented. I think the primary feedback was like, pick a couple of ideas and get them done rather than, you know, not getting anything done because you have a thousand ideas. And so they went to Miami Village and did a big book giveaway, and I met with them coffee in like November, shortly before the Miami. And they were still, you know, trying to figure out how to get the books in the hands, and we're not having problems getting books. They had thousands of books, people are always, but they couldn't figure out how to get them out. And at some point, I don't know who it was, but they ended up coming here in addition to Miami. That's the link, I don't know what happened.
They, they had something else lined up and there was, somehow it felt, I don't know, but it believed it sounds that it would be possible to use libraries and that's that.
Yeah, so they brought a Santa and a Princess Belle, which that was one of the ideas we did discuss. It's like, hey, we're coming up Christmas, tips will bound to bring a Santa. And indeed, they did, so they, they had three thousand books or two thousand books.
Wow.
It sounds like each kid got like.
We came home, we came home with an armload of books, Kelsey was out there just literally throwing books at.
They said it was extremely full, so I know several families that had come because it was bad, yeah, it was so full that it took in. And so.
Sure, and it was still pretty packed, I mean, the line was all the way down there.
No reason to leave that Dolly Parton.
What's that?
There's no reason to leave it to Dolly Parton, imagine it.
No, we managed to do it just in the, in the community. And so like, the only point of feedback I would have is like, how do we get more library cards into those people's hands? Because it was pretty clear that many of them were new to books, that, you know, weren't common interactors for books, so it was a prime.
Start sending those.
Yeah.
I used to love the scholastic book orders when I was a kid, I can't, but I did have parents who were willing to spend as much as I could get them to spend.
And I'm sure you were persuaded.
So.
Watched Brad.
Yeah, Mason and Natalie did a phenomenal job. I, I ended up writing their, their teacher a note because Mason was sure he was gonna get an A and I obviously trapped Steve. I said, for my vote, he gets an A. They did, they did. And I don't think that's an exaggeration, it was packed, it was packed.
Beautiful, well, in the, you're giving, let's look at claims.
Wow.
Thanks, you guys set me up, it was great. Has everyone had a chance to review claims? We have any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, God.
That's like a collective, but mainly booking.
They start on page twenty-five.
No, those, you can ask questions about those if you want to, they're just, those are the things with. Register of claims, yeah, it's actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, is that actually page thirty?
Yes.
I've got the pages, like, what page I'm on, and then there are pages.
There's two sets of claims, right? So starting at page thirty and then waiting for other sessions, it starts on page thirty.
I do have a question because they don't understand it, on page like twenty-seven, I know that before this. Like the first item under capital outlays, I'm creeping furniture equipment, like the true balance and the negative. And I, I just don't.
So tomorrow, after everything's done, I will go through with Linda, and I will move my, like, the hardware. Move it, so that furniture equipment is zero. Yeah.
How do you spend money on having that?
So, with, so.
The, you can do that within, like, the same silo without work group, right?
Personal service like new, whatever.
Yeah, absolutely.
If, if I were wanting to move, can I apply to capital?
Okay.
I will move to approve the financial reports and we.
Are you, that's both.
Again, if you have more questions, I didn't mean to cut that off.
Well, do you have to make a motion first, then I can ask the question? Angela wants to second that motion and.
Angela, second, there is now time for discussion.
Okay, on, on page thirty-three, this Blue Sky Services for three thousand. I don't know what they do.
Yeah, just blue, that's, that's.
Oh, thank you, okay.
And they also have, the stuff that I can handle myself.
The clock is just a little too tall.
I have letters.
I think they have come and helped with like a, a drinking company.
Yeah, so like when our drinking box was installed, farmers did that, but they came in and did all the, because of all.
On. Page thirty-five. Point number twenty-three by twenty-six, and twenty-three, five thirty-seven, fifty rather large expenditures. Just says computer part here. The other ones for building and. You know, like. Between the two, we're at like, forty-six thousand. Our career communications system, and they immediately.
So career communication, that, that's something that I think is just out, that's an uncover, so it's an outstanding check that they have. That's the, when they ran the data.
Right.
Ran the data, yeah. So that's why, but yeah, the, the flood is still uncovered, so that's why. What's the other one?
Uh, two, two entries down, the A and A group, for twenty-eight grand and then five grand.
Oh, and then that was the structural changes for the. Racks. So we had racks, yeah, so we had racks installed, but we also had run lines to do some power and stuff like that, so. It seemed real, we had like.
That was a long time.
It was.
And they, none of these people have attached their, their, so, so that way we have to, we have to move them forward and.
Yes, yes.
Business.
No, business works more logically.
Yeah, this sounds. My business brain is totally broken. Okay.
Let's go through like page thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine was the.
There.
That we did earlier.
I think those.
Your pepper.
They were on there. I noticed.
There's been a secondhand emotion.
There has, so if we're ready to vote, we can signify by saying aye. Sorry, approving the claims, anyone opposed, you can say aye. Hearing none, claims passed.
And there are two to sign, one December, the other one again.
Yeah, I, I did, I did, I did try to identify the visions instead.
Mark has moved to adjourn.
Oh, hang, Mark. All right, question about any upcoming board retreat.
Oh, thank you. Are there, so we're looking at March, if, are there types, days that are better, or like despite, maybe like a two-hour session in person?
Here?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were, you're on the Andy's, I don't know.
No, they will come to us.
For, for my schedule, it varies a great deal, that's why I didn't just sign a video landing. It's almost, it's easy if you just get something on the calendar.
That I can.
If, if it's two months out, and I may be able to work around, but sometimes I get something said and I just can't move it in.
The other question I was gonna ask was if there were any other questions about like moving forward with the budget and things, especially if they had an interest in that for next year. But I can help, look, before I have to be gone, but then we could bring something, if they think as well, or have some questions about that, that too, because that's really helpful, really helpful.
Pretty time, huh?
So that's what, and I would also suggest that the other board members aren't offended by it, that we do invite.
Yep, Terrence Hill and stuff.
Yes.
Yes, and I also, Terrence Hill is several new board members.
Yes, because it does, it does cost us anymore and we're kind of centrally loaded.
And it keeps you from, very different.
Yes.
That's, I'm looking at like thirty-two dollars. Especially we.
Hopefully lays, much, the most lead time we need.
I think the last, in, in March are the beginnings. Maybe, maybe I'm gonna get next summer.
Okay, well, I'm in Hawaii from March nineteenth through the thirtieth, so.
You didn't have to say where you.
Behind my bucket list. Behind my bucket list. Uh, yeah, you can go ahead, okay?
You can have any time, and you fight for Angela, let's do, I am not zooming in.
I am over there, I can't extend time on Martha's Day.
Your scheduling starting in March.
Oh, starting in March.
Starting, so we can do April.
Doing April, or maybe give as much, any time you should get that, I might use your.
I will be gone for two weeks in April, so I prefer May over April, personally.
The longer out.
Yeah, Megan's out already.
Like I said, I'm dealing with my wife have fifteen hours back surgery. Her spine comes down after this, makes sense, maybe something green turn this way, back, back and down, so.
That I.
Now, she's.
Do you think Dave better move?
Yes.
Lots put in.
You're saying, take off work.
She's saying. It's like.
But as long as we get hung in.
Thing, then we get announcement, why is he saying about is that, yeah, I got an arm loan. Yeah, okay, kids.
Okay, well, I'm teaching middle school, so I am gonna struggle to get a day off. I'm happy, you're not the only one, anyone.
It's.
I'm just sorry. I would prefer evenings, but that's, that's just.
That's what I'm thinking, is if we can do it like at four.
Oh, that would work.
With the exception.
Second to German.
Seconded, that's it, we've adjourned.
We have to come back?
What?
I.
It is, you do not have to vote, no matter what, great bed.